Everyone, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order tonight. Sorry we're running a couple of minutes late. And I ask that you join me in kicking off this meeting with a moment of silence and then we'll turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, next will be roll call. Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Repper.
Here.
And Mayor Bliss.
Here.
Alright, Commissioners, next. Okay, so we are gonna veer from our usual agenda to take a few moments to honor our city clerks. So tonight is our last meeting with our amazing city clerk Darlene O'Neal. So she is retiring after over thirty years, let me see, thirty-three to be exact.
Almost thirty-three, yes.
Thirty-three years of public service to our community. She has served in a number of roles throughout this entire organization and the last several years she's been our city clerk, has done a fantastic job, and so we will be saying our goodbyes to her tonight and appointing an interim and then going through a process to find our next city clerk. So tonight, before we get to our formal agenda, I wanna give our city clerk an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you. So initially, I prepared remarks to take the audience along a nearly thirty-three-year journey. Things like when I started with the city, my experiences over the years, and now my goodbye. Well, I've changed my mind. As my retirement date grew a little closer and the number of days shortened, so did my speech. So, keeping my comments very brief, I wanna change the traditional pecking order in terms of a farewell speech. So typically, your farewell speech begins with thanking the organization for an opportunity to grow and to develop, thanking friends and colleagues for their support and encouragement over the years, and reminding those that remain to provide the best services possible because in this case, this community deserves the best. Then the speaker wraps up with saying, oh, special thank yous to friends and family and all of those that supported them along the way. The end. Well, I don't wanna sound redundant, but my former colleague, the esteemed city manager, Greg Sunstrom, he did a fantastic job of touching on all of these areas in his farewell speech last week. So I just so happen to be working diligently with Greg Sunstrom in some capacity or another in the same organization for the past thirty-three years of his thirty-five years. So essentially, he said what I would say. So I wanna thank Greg Sunstrom for writing half of my speech last week. But as for me, I wanna begin and end by thanking my two beautiful daughters Mercedes and Anandi for taking this journey with me. They are the true deputy city clerks of my life because while I was serving this organization and the community, they were also doing some heavy lifting. They selflessly shared me with you, with the public, while I worked with great passion to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of all of my jobs over the years. So whether they were sitting in my office doing their homework while I wrapped something up real quick, or being toted on my hip, I'm taking my kids to special events while I check on something real quick, or just, you know, serving as a distinguished election workers, 'cause you better believe I put those girls to work, or just sitting in the back of this city commission chambers through some of the most longest historical meetings ever in the history of Grand Rapids, but you know what? They just worked alongside of their mom. And my daughters, they gave me purpose, but more so, they gave me the drive to push through when I just didn't think I had anymore to give. So I love those girls with all of my heart and soul, so I proudly announce it's just time to change the pecking order. So many people have asked me, well, what is your real reason for retirement, Darlene? You're too young, you don't look like you're old enough to retire. Oh, wait a minute, who ticked you off? Yeah, it just had to be, you know, something. But the simple answer is, there's just no scandal here. It's just time. It's just time. So thirty-three years of anything is a very long time, and now it's time for me to put my lovely daughters and myself first. I wanna spend more time taking care of myself, my health, returning to cooking, haven't cooked for a long time, exercising, travel, you know, just the fun stuff. So, and I'll end with that. But before I end, totally end, I would be remiss if I did not thank my current staff for the wonderful things that they do and will continue to do for this community and for this organization. So a special thanks go out to the Clerk's Office team, 'cause I could not have done it without you. So in closing, I did have a great career, I did, and I have met so many amazing people along the way, some characters too, but I made some lifelong friends here. Great memories, I've laughed, I've cried, and so much more. And it was because I worked for this organization and I served my community from my heart. But all good things must come to an end, and this is where I hand off the baton. So Grand Rapids, thank you for allowing me to give you the best of so many years, and I will never forget you. Thank you.
Darlene, your fingerprints and your legacy are all over this city, and they will be felt forever, so thank you. And you deserve to cook and spend time with your family, and exercise and travel. I personally have seen you here late nights, weekends, and I know all of us around this table, even if the community doesn't see it, you have sacrificed so much of your life for this organization, but also for this community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next that will take us to approval of our minutes, and this is from our meeting on January 30th.
So moved.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, so if this is the first time you are here at one of our evening commission meetings, I'll just walk you through the agenda and what to expect tonight. So we have three opportunities for public comment, and the first one is public comment on anything that we're actually voting on tonight. The second public comment period is actually for a scheduled public hearing. So tonight, we have a public hearing for a rezone of 843 Maryland Avenue and 2128 and 2129 Chesapeake Drive for a SD PRD, which is a special district planned redevelopment district. So if you are here to speak on that specific public hearing, I will open up that public hearing a little bit later on, and you'll have an opportunity to speak then. And then at the very end of the evening, we have an opportunity for public comment on anything else that you wanna weigh in on. So this first opportunity for public comment, I am gonna go ahead and open up. So if you're here to speak about something that we discussed earlier today and voted on, that you see on the agenda, you're welcome to come up. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and then the exact item that you're speaking to. So earlier today, we had a number of standing committee meetings, and during that time, we discussed a number of issues and voted on them. So that's what you see on the agenda, either under, I think most things are on consent tonight, so under consent and ordinances. So if you're here to speak on any of those items, I'm gonna open up this opportunity for public comment, and you're welcome to come forward. Alright, going once, going twice, Mr. Miller's standing up.
Good evening, fellow citizens, esteemed Rapid dudes and Rapid dolls. This is the House of People, Watchdog Miller speaking. Darlene, quota babyed her way into that job. Let's go to, I admired her two predecessors and spoke up for her immediate predecessor in various committees. Let's go to D12-2. I agree with a couple of Commissioners that the candidates for city major, city manager are shockingly thin. You know, what is this, Paducah, coming from very small towns, would never understand what's actually taken eighteen months to kinda get a feel what's, we've seen our chief of police come to almost every meeting because just trying to figure out what you northern liberals really want. So yet list, they wouldn't know Fulton from Fulton, Fulton from Fuller, I wouldn't know Watchdog Miller from Wally Baloo. My recommendation would be for Jana Wallace, who has been a tower of integrity ever since I've been, first started trying to pay attention at City Hall. She brings, Jana Wallace will bring smarts, integrity, and accomplishment to the table. She'd be immediately able to, she understands Grand Rapids, going to all these state time meetings during the years. You have something under safety, police protection, let's run the numbers on, we're under three hundred police officers in Grand Rapids, divide that into our population, pushing two-hundred-thousand. We only have one officer for every six-hundred-and-seventy citizens. Detroit with two thousand officers has one officer for every three-hundred-and-forty citizen. Chicago, the whole, the last time I looked, was they have thirteen thousand police, they have one, a ratio of one to two-hundred. We've seen other gentleman in Lou, who was an actual shell shock, you're just not giving us the police coverage because you're overpaying the police. So Grand Rapids is under police and again, overpaid. Let's go to C, Tennessee 1. It's an unfair, these citizens are disenfranchised. First of all, okay, the three thousand Monroe, I support a public hearing, what's gonna go on, it's a liberal union plot, they're gonna eliminate seventy-five percent of beds at that VA home. This is just insane, I spent a day there and help you, I wrote up twenty pages because I wasn't able to formally hone that, but let's go to two and three, those citizens are disenfranchised, their bus routes don't come here. Neither the two and three come from Old St. Joe's or Alberton, and well, basically, on items C2 and 3, the bus two, three, ten, sixteen, don't even come to City Hall.
Mr. Miller, your time's up, thank you. Alright, anyone else who wishes to be heard on something that we are voting on tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment, and that will take us to petitions and communications.
We have a communication received from David M. Juricek, expressing concerns for the planning commission recent zoning recommendations.
That is received and filed.
We have a communication received from Suzanne Teamstra, expressing concerns regarding the housing commission's recommendations.
That is received and filed.
We have a communication received from Todd Babic, expressing concerns regarding the housing commission's recommendations.
That is received and filed.
And a communication received urging the city commission to remove two pre-masonic grand lodgers from Grand Rapids.
And that is also received and filed. Alright, next that will take us to reports of city officers.
We have the comptroller's report for the period of January 24, 2018 through January 30, 2018, in the amount of four million eight-hundred-forty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
And that is received and filed.
And we have the treasurer's report for the period of January 20, 2018 through January 29, 2018.
And that is also received and filed. Alright, next that will take us to our consent agenda, and our consent agenda has a number of items we voted on earlier, and we voted on unanimously. So tonight, with one voice vote, we will adopt those items. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Alright, any questions or comments, Commissioners? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, next that will take us to our ordinances to be adopted.
We have an ordinance amending Chapter 181, General Traffic Regulations, to require vehicle operators to stop for pedestrians and uncontrolled crosswalks.
So moved.
Support.
Getting nervous there. So Commissioner Kelly, why don't you tell us about this?
Yes, we discussed this today in committee of the whole. In response to policy direction and values that were expressed in the Vital Streets Plan, staff identified concerns, and the city commission and citizen requests, staff from several departments, which included the city attorney's department, engineering, mobility, planning, and traffic safety, worked together to develop proposed amendments to our general traffic regulations. Specifically, they're recommending around pedestrians, that vehicles are required to stop for pedestrians and uncontrolled crosswalks. And I wanna explain that because that really means every crosswalk. And this is really part of a movement that is actually worldwide, and is now being adopted in many cities throughout the United States. It's called Vision Zero, and the idea is to reduce our traffic fatalities around pedestrians, which have gone up over the last few years, and get it down to zero. Sadly, we talked this morning about a funeral that the Commissioners went to last week as a result of a pedestrian death of one of the members of Grand Action, who's contributed a lot to the city of Grand Rapids, John Canova. We were all at a celebration, saying goodbye to Commissioner Schaefer when this happened as he was crossing the street to attend the event, so it was really tragic. And I hope that in his memory, we can all honor this policy and do our best to be careful when people are crossing the street. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Alright, this is a roll call vote tonight. Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Repper.
Yes.
And Mayor Bliss.
Yes.
Alright, next that will take us to our second ordinance tonight.
And this is an ordinance amending Chapter 51, entitled Streets, to accommodate pedestrian and bicycle safety and access in the public right-of-way during construction.
So moved.
Support.
Alright, Commissioner Lanier, you wanna tell us about this?
This mayor actually is just another chapter, it's Chapter 51 of what Commissioner Kelly just outlined, so there isn't much more to add.
Alright. Any, Commissioner?
Well, I would add this, that we are used to, in big cities like Chicago, if you go to visit, when there's a big construction project going on, there are accommodations made for pedestrians, and we haven't done that in the past, but this will be one of the added amenities in the city of Grand Rapids. And actually, one of our own on the Mobile GR Parking Commission, her daughter had a challenge. She was legally blind and was trying to get around the museum, and so, you know, we just were hearing of incidents where people are having to be forced to walk in the street around a construction zone. So we're growing city, and we're trying to accommodate those safety needs, that's what that's partially about, along with safety in bicycle lanes.
Okay, great. Alright, any other questions or comments? Alright, this is also a roll call vote tonight. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Repper.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
And Mayor Bliss.
Yes.
Alright, so next that takes us to our city commission resolutions, and the first one before us tonight is to elect interim city clerk to serve as interim until we hire our new city clerk. And so typical fashion in our organization is that the deputy moves into the interim role until a new appointed official is selected by this body. Under our charter, it is incumbent on us to appoint four appointed officials in this organization. And so at our last meeting, we talked about the process to do the search for our city clerk, so that will happen over the next several months. So during the period of when our city clerk retires, which is next week, during from that time on until we have a new city clerk, we'll have an interim. So can I get a motion for, to appoint our deputy city clerk as interim city clerk until we find a replacement?
So moved. Support.
Alright, and Commissioners, this will be effective after our city clerk's last day of retirement, so it's not effective immediately, it'll be effective next week, starting on the 14th, February 14th. Alright, any questions or comments about that? Alright, we appreciate our deputies stepping in, you have done that in the past during vacations, but we appreciate your work, and we'll look forward to working with you. Alright, alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Alright, Commissioners, now it takes us to a conversation and potentially a resolution about our next city manager. So those of you in the audience who haven't been following this, we started last fall, actually, in October, and we went through a process of identifying a search firm to work with, to create a community profile, candidate profile for our city manager. We actually had significant feedback from the community in that process, with well over a thousand people weighing in, over three hundred city employees weighing in to create that community profile. And then our search firm went out and actively posted that and recruited for that position. The city commission whittled that down, whittled down a candidate pool to five semifinalists, and then down to three finalists, and we have spent time with them as a body, but also as a community, over this past week, getting to know them. We had second round interview, we had a community forum last night, we had second round interviews earlier today, and then we had a couple hour break to read through all of the community comments and feedback, and now it's before us tonight to talk about as a body. So I'm gonna open this up for conversation and discussion, and then we will go from there, Commissioners. So let's see, we'll start over here with Commissioner O'Connor.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the floor. I would move that we re-initiate the search process for city manager, and that we repost the job within thirty days of today to further diversify and expand the pool of candidates.
Alright, so that is the motion on the floor to discuss. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Commissioner Jones, seconded that, so Commissioners, let's, let's talk about that as an option. So there's, it's on the floor, and let's have that conversation. So who would like to start? Let's go back to Commissioner O'Connor, since he made the motion, and I'll...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I feel that we have clearly communicated and adhered to the process which we set forth as a commission, there's clearly not agreement among this body who should lead this remarkable organization. Grand Rapids needs and deserves a city manager who can effectively lead this organization to the highest reaches of success. Well, I personally feel there was one candidate who rose to that level. We need to know without hesitation that whatever the candidate is, they rise to, rise to that ability amongst the best competition. It's my opinion that there are individuals in the field of municipal management who exist that can lead this organization in Grand Rapids. To facilitate our path to success, I think we need to reimagine the process and the strategy we utilize to attract this candidate. While I have some ideas about how this process may happen, it's up to this body to clearly articulate and administer that process to ensure that we foster an environment within this commission and this community that enables us to attract the best possible candidate.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, thoughts on, I think I saw a couple other hands. Did I see one down here?
Not yet.
Okay, alright. Commissioner Jones, you seconded that. Commissioner Lanier, did you have your hand up?
Yes. Commissioner O'Connor, I appreciate the motion that you've set before the body this evening. It is obviously in support of my opinions when we met last week, when we had our first round of interviews, which happens to be my same opinion tonight. The only edit that I would make to your motion is that I believe that this body needs to collectively meet, probably within the thirty days, to determine what that process will look like, as opposed to saying, we'll post, 'cause the posting could potentially come before that. But I just think us meeting within thirty days to kind of collectively talk through what we think the pros and the cons were of the process, and how do we get to the result that I think we're ultimately all hoping for. Are you willing to make that?
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, and I think my rationale for asking for a firm timeline is that I wanna ensure that this process is too important to let drag on, so I just wanna ensure that there's some urgency to the matter at hand, that we make sure that we're out as soon as humanly possible to figuring out how we get to success.
And I think part, if I can speak to that, I think part of what has not worked really well with this process has been what I would label, and what I've heard from the community is, it seems to be rushed. So, you know, if there is, if we're having dialogue, it may take a little longer, it may extend to the next meeting, I think that's healthy, as opposed to saying, we say we're gonna do it this day, so we need to force ourselves to make that decision when we're not necessarily ready. But I respect what you're coming to.
And I think for me, I wanna make sure that it's known, that we are, you know, we are accepting applications. It's not to say that the process has to be determined within that thirty-day period or within, I wanna make sure that the process is wholly agreed upon amongst this body and with a comfort level from the community at large, to know that there's buy-ins, so that when we get to the end the next time, we're really to the end.
I agree with that.
But I do, again, I have a sense of urgency to ensure that whoever's going to apply knows that this opportunity exists, and they could have a longer, you know, I think last time we were pretty quick on the turnaround to have folks supply us their interest in the position, and so I wanna make sure that that can be a longer burn to recruit more candidates, but at the same time, I need to make sure that we know that we're out there and out front quickly to let the, you know, the larger pool of candidates know that, you know, we're available.
And I think to add to that, the...
Okay, I wanna make sure, let's get to other folks first. Okay, so can we exhaust this current conversation, because I think there's a point of clarity that needs to be made, because if we were to say we're ready, we don't, we have a contract
with an existing firm that potentially need to either be renegotiated, or extended, or canceled, or whatever, and I think all of those are the factors that we have to take into consideration before we say we're ready to receive right now.
So I wanna talk about a couple things. One is, we just had three strong qualified candidates spend a week in our community, and they went through a very rigorous process. Any of you were at the, at the community forum last night, they stood up in front of our community and they asked, they answered really difficult questions, and I wanna honor that, and I wanna talk, I think each of them had strengths. I think there are aspects to each of them and their experience and their qualifications that I really appreciated, and I, which has made this really difficult, because they each bring a number of strengths, and there are things that I really like about each candidate. I've also listened really diligently to the community, and I sense a divide, and I think at a time like this, we have to have really strong candidates where we don't have a divide, where you don't have segments of our community feeling like they weren't heard. I think we do need to talk about the process, and I wanna do that. I think to re-initiate a process, we do wanna evaluate and assess, what did we think went really well, what do we need to do better? I agree with Commissioner O'Connor, I would like to put a firm date and get that re-initiated as quickly as possible, because I do think that message needs to be really loud and clear, that this isn't about waiting, we know the urgency of this. But I do wanna honor the candidates who came before us. I have a candidate who I think was the strongest of the three, I still think she is the strongest, and I thought quite a bit of her and her experience, so I wanna, I just wanna open it up and have a dialogue, see if other Commissioners wanna weigh in, before I call a question about where do we go from here. Let's start with Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would say that the division around this table is reflected in the community too. We have had supporters of all three candidates emailing us, two probably more, you know, two of the top ones, but I know, I don't even need to go into who those were. I too had a favorite and, but there again, you know, hearing the mind of this commission and your comments about not wanting to have a divided community, we need to take that into consideration, especially in this particular time in our nation, actually, where there's a lot of division in this country and we need to be all about healing. So I agree that we need to get a move on with this, get back to the job. And we had, we had a couple of glitches, one of which the audio didn't work with the first interviews, which was just certainly not intentional and you explained all that. And then, as you pointed out before, Commissioner Allen, some of this process was happening over the holidays. So it's always challenging to reach out to everybody in this community. It's very difficult. We try it through Facebook, we try it through the print media and we try it through our own connections, but, and we're going to have to try to figure out how to do it even better than that next time and be more clear. So I still think that, you know, the process was, was good, but I can understand why it wasn't perceived as good and we did have some, some glitches. So, so if that's the mind of this commission around this table, I can...
So that is the motion before us is to re-initiate the search process. And so you're welcome to share your thoughts on, on anything else during this discussion, but that's what I'll be calling the vote on as soon as everybody has an opportunity to speak. So Commissioner?
I gave this a really lot of heart, heartfelt soul searching since we finished the second round of interviews. And what I want to say is I just actually want to put out a set of apologies. So the first thing I want to do, if you're watching on Facebook Live, I want to apologize to the three candidates. This is a process that we as a commission designed and approved. So we have to own that. So we either own that we got great candidates or own that it didn't work out. So I really want to apologize to the three candidates. You all did a great job interviewing. It's not worth at this point going into, you know, I, I wish you well. If you feel you want to reapply, come reapply, be part of a bigger pool. I, I don't know. But again, I want to apologize to you. This is not a reflection on you, it's a reflection on our putting together a bad set of, plan of action. Second, I want to apologize to Joe Ellen. I see her sitting in the front row from Gov HR. This is a program that we put together on our timeline, based on our criteria. They did, they contacted over 150 cities with populations over 100,000, sent to over 250 direct emails to the city officials in those cities. They sent out 6,000 direct emails to city officials working in cities of over 25,000 and we got 61 resumes. So why was that? I think we could talk about that at a later date. I would put out there that I think that going from five candidates down to three candidates, where the five candidates was public, if I was thinking about running, which I'm not, I would never put my name in the hat being five. And then if you're not one of the two chosen, then you put it out there in the universe that you were looking for another job. I mean, if I'm a finalist, that's a different situation. So I think that was a mistake on our part. Next, I think I just really want to apologize to the community, because I think we set up some unrealistic expectations. We are bound by Public Meetings Act and we, we stick by that. And so when, so there were things that could not be disclosed in a timely manner, yet the community somehow felt that they owed it, that we owed it to them to put this out there. So, so I'm apologizing to the, to the community as well and I, we will do better. And I, and so I support the motion to suspend, to suspend it and, and reactivate it. And I echo Commissioner O'Connor and Commissioner Lanier's call to, to do this in a timely manner so we get right back on the horse quickly, but we need to do it in a thoughtful way. So I just wanted to issue those apologies, because that's really where I ended up at the end of the day.
All right. Commissioner O'Connor, do you want to speak?
Joe, you want the last word or you want me to have it?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Today has been an interesting day for me, so I learned a lot today. But I, I think it's, there are two things that I'd like to note about the process that I heard loud and clear from the community that, that I'll commit to digging into before, if, before we would move forward with this. First, it was, it was asked over and over again for a position with such great power as this, that's an appointment where the community can't speak into it. Did we do adequate community engagement? And so I think that we had our best effort, but clearly we can do better. And so I commit to reaching out to the people who called that question to find out what their ideas are about what that engagement would look like, so that we can get that right in the eyes of the community this next time around. The second was, was the recruitment and vetting process satisfactory and comprehensive? As was there anything else that could have been done that would have resulted in more qualified candidates? And so I'm interested, I'm committed to debriefing with Joe Ellen and Ryan about answering that question. I honestly don't know the answer to that. This is a national search and, but if we're going to do this again, then we need to produce people at this caliber and above. And so I need to do some research to, to figure out how we can do that. So those are two things that I heard loud and clear from the community about our process. And I commit to finding out what good, what satisfactory community engagement would look like and to doing research about best practices to actually get the candidates that we want to apply for the job. I had a preferred candidate, I can't, you know, I'll just say it, I came prepared to cast my vote today for Carol Mitten, you know, and I, and I'll share what is important to me in this process. I'm looking for a candidate who's, who has the ability to think deeply, seek information from new sources and integrate that with the staff, commission and community to creatively address the persistent issues of inequality in our community. We need wisdom and we need someone with strength to stand in the midst of, of that and advocate for what's right with pressure from many places. And so we need someone who's got the skills to care for a staff that works extremely hard and guide us through that transition as well. And I believe that Carol had those qualities. I just want to put that on the table. And I thought that she would have been a great compliment to our commission and the staff and would also honor our community.
Commissioner Jones?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I, I too am in favor of a reset and to begin the process again. I know that I've taken the opportunity to speak to as many different people from different audiences as possible. I've spoken with city staff, I've spoken with, obviously my colleagues, I've spoken with clergy, I've spoken with community folks, business owners. And what I was most impressed with was this desire to, A, engage and, and obviously have an opinion. They had an opinion in terms of what, what this next person should be. And they began to list qualities of what the city manager should, you know, who that, you know, what that applicant should be bringing to the table. And, you know, what we, I think we can all agree that we've found that, you know, there's, there's a lot that's being asked in terms of the, the quality of individual to, to lead the, the city. And again, I think we've been spoiled in that we've had the opportunity to be led by two people over the course of 30 years. And we really haven't had to, I think, operate much out of our comfort zone. And I will say that nothing about this has been comfortable. I think perhaps the perception is, is that our decision or my, my decision, I actually had a constituent tell me that they felt as if my decision was, because it was comfortable, I said, there's nothing comfortable like this. You know, part of me wants to just go ahead and make a decision and, and just, and, and move on. But, you know, I try my best to give thought to, you know, the future. And so I try to operate, operate with foresight and give thought to, you know, as we, our tenure here is limited. And so, you know, what's going to be in the best interest, you know, for the citizens of this city? What's going to be in the best interest of the men and women who are going to replace us on this day is. And so I try my best to put myself in, in their shoes. And then also, you know, again, in, in, in trying to find this, you know, I remember we were, we spent the time putting together the profile for, you know, the city manager, you know, the, the next city manager. And I'm convinced that most people, as they were describing who they wanted, my thought was, you're describing Jesus Christ and he's not applying. Because there was this, there was this laser being focused on finding all of these gifts and skills and talents and, I mean, you know, we're flawed individuals and so everybody's going to have some shortcomings. And what I want to say about the three, the three finalists, I, I tip my hat to all three of them, because I think they all are gifted, they're talented. And I really believe that the work itself, in many ways, it's muscle memory. I believe that. I believe that because we have the staff, the city staff that we have, that they have the capacity to do the job. There's no question about that. What I struggled with was their ability to do the job for such a time as this. That was my struggle and that's still my struggle. And so I am at peace with the decision of having the process begin again where there is greater input provided by our citizens, realizing that ultimately, when this next individual is selected, everyone, not everyone's going to be happy. But at least there will be, it would be said that there was an opportunity for folks to have adequate or significant time to really fully engage. And I know, I, I too believe, as my colleagues have stated, Commissioner O'Connor and Commissioner Lanier, I believe there are, you know, it's, it's not a matter of, of whether or not the talent is out there. And yet I am sensitive to the issue of confidentiality. And anybody who tells me that they would be, that they don't understand why, you know, several folks would apply for this job, I'm going to have a problem receiving that, because again, we're asking someone, we're asking some folks who currently are employed, probably have a really nice gig, to put it out there that they're looking for something else. That doesn't necessarily add up to, to job security, right? So, you know, the fact that there, that these three, that these five, that others who applied, that they did it, knowing that, that it was going to be public, again, I applaud them. And I am hopeful that as we move on, that we will attract more candidates and that we will have a situation where it will be hands down, whoever is selected, that we will have peace about it, because we will have a slate of folks, of candidates, that again, have positioned us through the process to have significant confidence in their ability to serve and to lead. So, yeah. Reset.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I want to, I want to say a couple of words before I finally call a question. So we've, not all of us around this table, but some of us, we've been through this before, right? We have attempted to fill a position, we've opened it back up. In fact, we're seeing it right here within our organization right now. Our library board just went out, they, they interviewed a couple of months ago for the director of the library. The board was, was not, they didn't, there wasn't a consensus around that table and they re-initiated the search. And now they have four candidates that they'll be moving forward with. So, so to me, re-initiating a search is, is telling of our commitment to wanting to find the absolute best candidate. I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Allen, that there, this, the process, especially over the last couple of weeks, was challenging and I too was disappointed at some of the kinks we had along the way. But I have a lot of faith and I've always had a lot of faith in this body and the collective wisdom around this table. And I too think that if, going forward with the re-initiating a search gives us an opportunity to be thoughtful about that. I do, I do agree with Commissioner O'Connor that I would like that to be very clear that we're going to do that pretty quickly. I think we will have time to evaluate what we think went well, what we think we need to improve, how do we answer those questions that were posed to us about community engagement and process and still honor a process where we know that candidates are taking a significant risk, moving into a, a public process. And I think we can work that out. I think we've learned a lot from this process together. And, and I hope we, in fact, I don't hope, I will plan to have those conversations soon, probably within the next two weeks, so that we can decide how best to move forward. Couple of logistic things is that we are in the process now of moving forward with hiring a city clerk, as well as we're moving into budget. But with that said, I would still like to have a very clear timeline and make that known to the community about what they can expect for the timeline. Because some of the feedback that we have also heard is that if you do not coalesce around one candidate, the community, several, and I know you all have heard this message too, a lot of people in the community want us to re-initiate the search rather quickly and send a clear message that this is a priority. And I think all of us have heard that as well. So any final comments before I call the question tonight? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. So Joe Ellen, we will reconnect with you and find a time to have a conversation about next steps. And we'll regroup and do a really thoughtful analysis of what we thought went well, what we thought we would like to change, what we think we would like to change, and then we'll move forward. So, thank you. All right. So that will next take us to our public hearings. So tonight we have one scheduled public hearing. This is a public hearing on a proposal through Zone 843 Maryland Avenue Northeast and 2128 and 2829 Chesapeake Drive into a SD PRD. So I have Suzanne Schultz here, so I'll have Suzanne kick this off and see if, I'll have you start it. And then I'm assuming we have, I don't have the list in front of me of individuals from the development who are here, and then we'll open it up for public access.
Yes. The developer Greg Holwerda is here with his wife and their engineer, in case there are any questions. On January 9th, you set this date to hold the public hearing to consider 843 Maryland to 12, or 2128 and 2129 Chesapeake Drive Northeast to rezone it from modern neighborhood, low-density residential to special district plan redevelopment district, which that means is that the plan that you see would be the approved plan for the development and then any alterations then would need to go back through the amendment process with both planning commission and city commission review. This site over the years has been pretty controversial. It's known as the Old Horse Farm. It follows right along 196 on the north side up to Maryland, kind of between Maryland and Plymouth. And there's been a number of development proposals over the years. One included a plat for single-family homes, which did not take into consideration the environmental features of the site. It was under an old zoning ordinance and the city commission at that time in the mid 90s, right?
Early 2000s.
Early 2000s. It was, it was quite controversial about connections to the development that's located to the west of it. After some, you know, the recession and, and all that, the developer then went through, and Mr. Holwerda actually lives on the site, and they've gone through a number of different iterations. And one of the considerations with our current code that they didn't have when they had originally started thinking about development of the property is the plan redevelopment district, which allows for consideration of environmentally sensitive features. And you'll remember in about 2007 and since then, we've passed ordinances regarding steep slopes, tree canopy and wetlands and trying to preserve those natural features on the property. This is a unique site. There's a pond as well as a county drain and wetlands, as well as forested area of high-value trees near Maryland. And trying to develop this in a sensitive way while also being able to support public infrastructure, water sewer, as well as the street, public street is proposed through the site that would connect to the neighborhood and looking at all of that. So considering what kind of development that they'd be proposing, they're proposing 134 dwelling units in 25 two-story buildings of two, four, six or eight pods. And all of the, I mentioned the street, the sidewalks, lighting, water sewer would be dedicated to the city as part of a normal development project. As we've gone through and looked at the site, there's been a number of adjustments that have been made even since the planning commission heard this. The planning commission did vote unanimously to support recommendations of, of this ordinance. The changes that have been made include moving buildings away from Maryland, further back by 40, I have to look up here. The buildings nearest to Maryland will move further west. They were moved 41 feet, so as to have a setback of 56 feet from the rear lot line of 870... of 879 Maryland. And then, the units 49 and 50, which were closer to the street, were also moved 48 feet to have a setback of 84 feet from Maryland. So, both the house that's adjacent to Maryland, adjacent to where the drive location is, they've moved units back from that a little bit, as well as back from the street. They also met with Dan Tabor, our stormwater engineer. We've had a lot of discussions about how to develop this more sensitively, so there was less disruption of the tree canopy in the area and less site grading for the property. And as a result of those conversations, they've now met the tree canopy requirements for the zoning ordinance of 41% for the zone district, which is, the planning commission said you need to meet the LDR zone district, which they do now meet. And they have reduced the amount of grading on the site. So, there's a ridge that's located between this property and homes to the north. They are stopping on the south side of the ridge where the development will take place. That will be areas that they'll be disturbing for their development. But everything from the north side of the ridge that would be facing the neighbors will remain undisturbed, both for the grading and the trees. So, that preserves the buffer for those neighbors. They've also, as you go further to the west, done the same thing, and actually, just a recent development was changing the stormwater there and providing for a water quality element, and then increasing the storage and directing the water across into the pond area, which helps preserve, again, the area to be disturbed adjacent to the neighbors. So, they've changed quite a bit over the time. Mr. Holwerda can talk about his market and the intent to make this a condo development. And the master plan, there is no area-specific plan addressing this area. The 2002 master plan designates the development site as low-density residential. And the area to the north of the pond designated as medium-density residential. When we looked at the density calculations, the proposed project is approximately 4.6 dwelling units to the acre. And so, we found that it met that requirement for the master plan. And again, the natural site features have been largely preserved. There will still be some tree canopy loss, but with the changes that they've made to the site, they've tried to keep as much intact as possible. Are there any questions?
Questions? I remember this project from when I was a commissioner.
Yes.
I'm like, as soon as I walked in, I'm like, oh, I love all the familiar faces. So, I will turn to my colleagues, my second ward commissioners, to see if they want to weigh in or have questions for Suzanne.
And Mr. Holwerda is engineers here too, if you have any questions about that. Traffic has been a consideration. Most of the neighbor comments have been around development in general of the area, the density of the development, traffic on Maryland, and kind of environmental impact. So, traffic found, we did, we have a letter from a traffic engineer, they did go through that analysis. We've had conversations with traffic safety. Traffic safety said that no, there's really no net increase to traffic, because what this does is, right now, the development that's to the north of this site is completely reliant on exiting onto Leonard Street. The connection to this new street will allow exit onto Maryland. So, how traffic is dispersed through the neighborhood will change, both for existing residents as well as the new residents. But traffic on Maryland would see, you know, it would have some impact, but there is capacity in Maryland, according to the traffic safety department, that a signal is not warranted for the development. The environmental impact, I already mentioned. Dan Tabor's been very involved in reviewing this and is pleased with the progress that's been made as far as the amount, or reducing the amount of disturbance and how that they've been working to improve water quality on the site. And the density, as I mentioned, does fall into accordance with our master plan. It also provides a different housing type that we have not had in this area with the condo development, even though it's higher density than what you see for a single-family development. There is a demand for, especially for seniors leaving single-family homes and looking for something to transition into. This does provide a different housing type than what is currently available.
All right. Commissioners, you want to weigh in on this before Mr. Holwerda comes up?
Well, just a couple of comments. We've gone from, I think this is the third iteration of this, once before I was on the commission and once together with you when you were commissioner. And I know that it's gone from apartments to condos, and of course, as you mentioned, there've been some changes around the wetland rules. And I have gotten a few emails, I think both of us have, not a whole lot yet, but I expect maybe more. And this is the reason for a public hearing tonight, to hear from the residents. And in response to those emails, communicated both with the neighborhood association and with the Holwerdas, and they have made some changes since, so I appreciate that. So, I think at this point, I just want to hear from, you know, go through the public hearing process.
All right. Mr. Holwerda, do you want to share any additional comments that maybe Suzanne didn't touch on?
I think Suzanne did a great job. I would be available, I think, for any questions that any folks might have or anyone in the audience.
Okay. All right. Then I will go ahead and open up this formal public hearing. So, if you're here to speak on this project, now's an opportunity, come forward. You can share your name and the city you live in, and then you'll have up to three minutes to share your thoughts. Good evening.
And commissioners, my name is Susanna Cosio. I live on Chesapeake for over 40 years, before there was a horse farm yet. So, we have a lot of concern. It's been 15 years since this plan is being, trying to be developed. Mr. Holwerda started in 2003 and had a different plan. It was to be called Chesapeake Hill Platte, with 44 single homes and some apartments to go with it. Since then, a lot of things have changed, from apartments to condos. And we have a concern that there is way too many units for the place that there is room for. And we, besides condominiums, like four units, six units, or eight units, it's concerned because the garage for every unit, there's gotta be room for that, too. The streets that's gonna go from Maryland to Chesapeake, it's not gonna be as wide as some other city streets. So, the parking, it's gonna be limited. So, there are concerns about that. So, otherwise, I'm pretty happy with neighbors. I wish they stayed instead of building and salad, because Mr. Holwerda lived next door to me. So, but I would like to have, see this plan a little different. It's way too congested for 134 units as apartments and condominiums. That's about it.
Thank you. All right. Others who wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Tim Hoppe. I live in Grand Rapids, also on Chesapeake Street. I'd like to just make a few comments about the density of the proposed project. There are 32 addresses directly on Maryland between 96 and Leonard totaling 57 acres. That'd be 1.78 per acre. In the dead-end suburb community adjoining directly north to the proposed development comprising of Warchester, Walwood, Northampton, Gabriel, Bradford, and Chesapeake Streets, there are 170 houses on 50 and 1/2 acres. That's 3.38 units per acre. The Veridian Development proposes out of 29.93 acres, 10.2 plots of wetlands on the northwest corner that is completely unusable, and in my opinion, shouldn't be considered for the total acreage of the project. Of the remaining 19.7 acres, there are two acres of wetland, again, that are not usable. The city meeting from 2010 stated that 42% of the 29 acres was protected wetlands. That 42% is very close to the amount of wetlands deduced using GIS tools provided on the Access Parcel Viewer. 29.93 times .58 equals 17 acres of non-wetlands. And all of that, 17.3, is on the 15-acre plot and the 4-acre plot, having nothing to do with the northwestern 10.27 acres, which is wetlands. The figure using GIS tools was 16 acres, but 17.5 is a fine number to work with. 134 units divided by 17.5 is 7.6 units per acre. Following Phase 1, 2, and 3 figures came from the developer's proposal. Using mapping tools on Access Kent, Phase 1, 50 units on 5.7 acres is 8.77 units per acre. Phase 2, 54 units with eight total acres, with 6.4 usable acres, is 8.4 units per acre. Phase 3, 30 units on less than four usable acres, 7.5 per acre. This is a low-density area. This developer started with an approval to add 44 single-family units, and now is crammed 134 units. We do not want to see this developed at all. However, Mr. Holwerda has the right to develop his land. What we are asking for is that we do the math to favor those of us who will continue to live there, not just so that he can add more units and then move on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Others who wish to be heard?
My name is Lori Larson-Dornbos, and I live on Chesapeake, right abutting the property. That was a whole lot of numbers for this English teacher, let me tell ya. Do we neighbors want to see these 30 acres that are just absolutely beautiful developed? Absolutely not. Do we understand that Mr. Holwerda has a right to develop those acres? We sure do. We understand that. And this is my third time speaking in front of the commission. I've done it every time he has been up, and the plans have changed considerably. We started with 44 single homes years ago, and now we're up to 134 units. For our neighborhood, that is just too many units. We're low-density. The last time we came before the city commission, they agreed that they would preserve our neighborhood as low-density, single-resident homes. And quite frankly, if the appropriate research had been done by the developer perhaps before the purchase of the property, we wouldn't be in this position, and he wouldn't be in this position. The neighbors are affected in some ways by his choices, and we shouldn't have to pay the price for, the price of higher density for profits that benefit the developer. Mr. Holwerda's density needs are not the problem, so the neighbors, the city planners, the city of Grand Rapids, they are his responsibility to contend with. And we ask that you keep it low-density, single-resident homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori Cosio. All right. Others wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Jan Ingram, and I live on Northampton Drive, which is one street over. And I was active in this development before also. Mr. Holwerda and his representative were completely wrong in stating that the neighborhood association was accepting an agreement with his proposed plan, as we stated in the presentation to the planning community. That was one person's opinion as far as our neighborhood association, and you can see by the amount of people that are here tonight that we are very opinionated on this development. And, let's see, we do not agree with a special land use. Single, two-family units and multifamily up to three are currently allowed. The zoning change or special land use changes the entire demographic and character of our neighborhood and the reasoning behind why we bought our homes in that area. The intent of the city of Grand Rapids' master plan is to control and eliminate the need for rezoning and to plan a development in a way that is compatible with its surrounding neighborhood, and this is most certainly a multiple-unit housing proposal. What is the necessity in building six- and eight-unit condos? There isn't one. Are single, double, and even four-unit condos not enough? Can't the six- or eight-units be split into more appealing, smaller combinations like the other condos in our area? The allowance of four- and six-units was previously rejected by the city, and yet now you're open to six- or eight-units? Lest we forget to question the projected cost of these proposed condos. Currently, two-unit condos in the area are selling for approximately $160,000 for a 1,600-square-foot unit, and $285 for 2,300-square-foot units. The developer is anticipating a price point between 200 and 225 for 1,100 to 1,200-square-foot condos. Why would anyone pay nearly one and a half times more for a condo that is not only significantly smaller, but is in a congested community with no amenities? If owner occupancy is the true goal, wouldn't it be more aesthetically appealing for Mr. Holwerda to decrease the number of condos and instead include an association pool or tennis courts? That is, after all, the norm in most newer neighborhood developments. In reference to changes to the zoning, Puritan Seminary's request for SLU for a 15-unit student housing structure on 4.5 acres of land was unanimously rejected by the planning committee in April 2017, stating, "The proposed use will not be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use will detract from the character of the residential neighborhood..."
Jan, thank you.
"...and result in a density that is out of scale with the existing neighborhood."
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. If you want to provide them in writing, you're welcome to.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Others who wish to be heard? Hi. Good evening.
My name is Paul Greenwald. I live on Forland Court Northeast in the city of Grand Rapids, and I am a member of the Board of the Northeast Citizens Action Association. I want to refer the commissioners to our letter of December 5, 2017, to the planning commission about this proposed development. Our position is the same as set forth in our December 5 letter. While no development at all, or development of single-family homes would be the most ideal for the current residents of the area, that is not likely due to the cost of developing this unique property. Furthermore, the direction that the city commission and city staff have taken tell us that multifamily housing developments are more likely in further development in the city of Grand Rapids. The developers have shown a willingness to listen to others and accommodate their concerns. They have met with our board on several occasions and presented at public meetings which we have held. They have recently made some changes based on the planning commission's concerns voiced at that meeting. They have changed many parts of their plans after meeting with the city staff, and the planning commission made it clear that the project would be subject to close scrutiny by that body and by the staff as it progresses. We would like to see as much green space as possible preserved, and stormwater, storage, and handling are significant questions and problems on the site. Nonetheless, the proposed PRD would allow these issues to be addressed most easily and most completely. The project already meets the density requirements under current zoning as far as we can determine. Our board does not see a legal reason upon which we can oppose this project. We, however, ask for close scrutiny on this project as it moves forward.
Thank you.
My name is Leslie Dennis, and I live on Chesapeake, as do a number of the other people that have spoken. that have spoken. I absolutely agree with what people have said about the reason that I originally purchased my home there was the wildlife around, was the country feel of the area. One of my biggest concerns about this project, and I have spoken before about my feelings about the project, is traffic. Opening up a road to intersect or open to come around and intersect with Chesapeake, which is currently a cul-de-sac and a dead end, obviously cul-de-sac, dead end, would open it up to, if we're having, looking at one-hundred-and-thirty-four condos, a minimum of one-hundred-and-thirty-four cars and probably double that, those cars because of the difficulty of turning onto Maryland and the intense traffic, particularly at times between five and six, when I have tried to turn on Maryland and off Oak Industrial coming from that direction. The traffic is very difficult. Coming into our neighborhood, it would be really detrimental to the neighborhood to have that additional number of cars driving through on a regular basis. Stated in one of the original meetings with the planners is that the road is going to be narrower than usual, and the setback of the condos from the street, and I'm not sure this is accurate, but it's going to be five feet from the street, leaving very little road for parking, for anyone should have a second vehicle. The other thing that is currently already difficult is turning out of the area off Warchester onto Leonard. There's a hill there. It's very challenging to see traffic. And it coming, there's no center turn lane on Leonard, which makes it more difficult to try to, I'm always cautious when I'm turning left into the area that somebody's going to come and hit me. So the traffic is already an issue for those of us living there, and I see it only getting worse. The other thing that has in occurring within a two-mile radius of where we are are the number of, and I won't list them all, but an additional six-hundred-and-sixty-two new units within a two-mile radius of this area. And then to add Mr. Holwerda's units would be seven-hundred-and-ninety-six new units with one or two cars. That's too much traffic.
Thank you. Good to see you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Tim Carey. I live on Gabriel Court, and I would like to speak to you about the environmental concerns we have. The proposed development's landscape varies greatly from ravines to low-lying areas to wetlands. Water runoff onto Gabriel Court and Bradford Court's properties already greatly affect our homes. Building directly above these homes will inevitably increase the runoff and erosion of the ravines. Wouldn't building placement, consistent with the current topography and natural features, be better? It was also pointed out that there are additional sections that were deemed unbuildable at the planning meeting. This further decreases the buildable areas. Again, is the wetland allowed to count as buildable acreage? Previous proposals also pushed for development in areas that were unbuildable until they were exposed. May we also note, every one of the previous proposals was approved by the city planning committee. With all due respect, their expertise and reasoning needs to be examined. When the land is graded and leveled out for the road to be put in for six- and eight-unit buildings, it is inevitable that will be compromised to said pond. Even twelve-to-eighteen percent slopes can have low soil strains. A potential five-to-six-year development plan will definitely impact the pond. Beneath our neighborhood is solid clay, and construction equipment, grading, drainage, runoff, and weather conditions all ensure environmental detriment to the pond. This after the county's completion of the Waring Drain Project and its improvements in cleaning and clearing of the local drain system, all of which we paid for in additional taxes. The pond is a distinct character in and of itself in this development. While it is not entitled to wetlands protection, it is the source of water that feeds the waterways, ponds, and studied ecosystem of Aquinas College and ultimately flows into Fisk and Reed's Lake. It is a source of water for all the wildlife in the area, including coyote, deer, fox, muskrat, and heron. It is also a FEMA flood control area. It must be ensured that it will not be compromised and, in the end, far-reaching environmental destruction. Just to reiterate, Mr. Dan Taber very, very clearly stated at the city planning committee, after multiple questions were raised as to unaddressed issues, concerns, and additional unbuildable areas, that a well-sought-out soil erosion plan is needed with this development.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Helen Harp, and I live adjacent to the property located at eight-forty-three Maryland. I've been in my home for over twenty-nine years. And I know that you know that location, location, location is important when buying real estate. I know that Mr. Holwerda needs to develop the property that he has purchased. I don't have a problem with single-family homes going into that area. I don't even have a problem with condominiums going into that area as long as they're regular-type condominiums. If you were to inspect what he's getting ready to, or what he's asking you to build, these particular units have a downstairs that he's selling as well as an upstairs that he's selling. I've never seen a condominium where you buy upstairs, so they would be more like apartments than condominiums. So if he doesn't sell them, then what happens? Does it turn into an apartment complex that he rents out? So, you know, like I said, I don't have a problem with him building on the land, but density is a problem. One-hundred-and-thirty-four units is quite a bit, and if you really look at subtracting the wetlands from the total acreage that he has purchased, you'll find that the eight units per acre is a correct number, which is way higher than what Ms. Schultz even recommended to mayor, to city manager Sunstrom back in November of two thousand and seventeen. I find, I found a memorandum where she had talked about changing the rules on putting multiple-family homes into modern area, neighborhood, low-density residential areas. And so I think that you really should go back to what even the planning commission has stated would be ideal for putting in that area instead of what he's proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi. Glenda Magalsky, two-one-six-one Chesapeake. There was a number of unanswered questions post the city planning committee meeting, so wanted to, it sounds like there were many things addressed since then, which I find a bit odd because it was in fact approved, but there were many unanswered questions regarding that development. When details or questions were asked of the developer, his engineers, landscapers, Elizabeth Zeller of the planning committee, they admitted to not having concrete answers, answers for a project that has been in the planning stage for years in conjunction with the city. We found that to be pretty alarming. It seems to be a very soft projection for something that may break ground this spring. There is no timeline for this development or the completion of it beyond that there are in fact three phases, and that is stated by the developer, which I think means that during phase one, they will build some units. After those units have sold, they will then move on to phase two and build some more and repeat a third time. So will this take three years, six years, nine years, twelve? Does anybody really know? There will be an impact from such a long-term, or a long-term state of under-construction as people talk about the condition of the property, the clay, the runoff, and all these other concerns. There doesn't, is there a limit? Will there be a limit to the one-hundred-and-thirty-four plus or minus number of condos allowed to be built? If so, what is that number? Can plans be modified over the years? It sounds like there's been a number of changes since when the planning committee met. If they cannot complete the project, will new developers or builders have to adhere to the specifics of the special land use of condos only? To those existing plans or renderings, can one purchase a building, then rent them out? Developer has a current undertaking in Traverse City that has been going on for years with limited homes built and lots being offered for sale with multiple Realtors and ad stating builders welcome. This is a repeated track record and method of operation we've seen over and over with the same results for the last fifteen years monitoring this development. We do not want that same result repeated in our neighborhood. When single-family homes were the subject, which the developer was already approved for and most desired by the neighborhood, that's one thing, but with four, six, and eight-unit buildings, it's a different story. If unable to complete an open-ended project, what comes next? Are we left with an unfinished condo association followed by who knows what? How nice for the individuals and families to watch the developer walk away from the special land usage benefit provided by the city, whereas the commitment to the buyers and neighbors whose lives and property values are impacted by the project? And I'm not going to make it through the next one, so.
Okay.
I will thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. You are welcome to leave written comments, though, if you like, or you can email us.
Hello, my name is Sandy Decoker. I'm one of the founders, the past board members, and past president of MICA. I worked on the nineteen-eighty-four master plan. I have lived on Chesapeake for fifty years along with several other residents. We have a lot of new families coming in that are starting families. My own two children have bought houses in the area, in the neighborhood, and this has got to tell you that it's a unique place to live. Both my children and grandchildren have had the opportunity to experience and enjoy nature in my own backyard. We live with, in the city limits, but yet we're in the, I have a country atmosphere. After attending the December Planning Commission hearing on February day in place, it was like a rerun of two thousand and ten planning hearing. Concerns not heard and significant land issues, questions unanswered, yet the project was passed. I thought the city and the neighborhood had come a long way in thirty-seven years. The city and residents were working together on issues, but now it sounds like we're back to square one. The city is now wanting to increase density, increase use of green space, increase land use, and are not considering the character of the neighborhood for new developments. What is happening to our great city? Again, it's sad to think that the future looks like the developers will have more clout than the citizens. The master plan has made, been made for a reason. The whole intent was to control and eliminate all this rezoning. A plan to develop a way, and it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. If it's to be made, it should be enforced because a lot of hard work, time, and money by the city has been, would be in vain. I have some interesting facts about the, from Realtors. Households were surveyed showing three-fourths of them would purchase a single-family home. Of those surveyed, eighty-five percent were homeowners and seventy-five percent were renters. Two thousand and sixteen Grand Rapids was, and probably still is, one of the hottest markets, but a lack of homes have been for sale. So why do we need more apartments, condos? Let's promote family, single-family homes. I have some things here about Mr. Holwerda's ambitious plans. There are too many units crammed in, which we've talked about before. Our neighborhood has four streets with one-hundred-and-sixty-six houses, while we're in place has one-hundred-and-thirty-four units on one main street. The green land is the wetlands. As far as the lay of the land, vegetation is going to be disturbed, and that's going to be clay. And I myself, we have worked on our backyard and dealt with clay, and it was a mess. The pond changes every day and with the weather, one day high, one day low, and like in nineteen-thirteen or two thousand and thirteen, it rose five feet or more. Mr. Holwerda has chosen a difficult piece of land to develop. We are not about to take chances of jeopardizing what we are, without making sure we are heard, understood-
Thank you, Sandy.
...and our plans.
Thank you.
And then I would like you to just pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Tim Nowak. I live at two-two-six-zero Chesapeake, and I'm not here to talk about numbers. I'm not good at it. But I'd first like to comment about your discussion about the city manager. All of you made the point that we listen to the community. We're hoping you do the same today to our friends and family back here that have the same concerns. Getting here today was a little difficult on Warchester because the snow, parked cars, and it's only really one lane. We're talking about adding one-hundred-and-thirty-four cars times one-and-a-half or two, which will become a shortcut to, from Maryland to Leonard. Both of those streets are very, very busy. People will understand, and this has been talked about in the Neighborhood Association meetings, that this could become a shortcut. We have kids there, we have bicyclists, we have all sorts of neighborhood activities going on, and this will become a high-traffic area. In due respect to the traffic study that was done, probably at three in the morning, said that there wouldn't be an increase in the, in the traffic flow with all those cars coming into the neighborhood. At our last Neighborhood Association meeting, the developer was there and a lot of questions were asked, and a lot of those answers were, "I think." Well, I think this, well, I think that. I didn't walk away from there knowing that there would be a positive plan, and I'm wondering if there's even one on record at this point, because a lot of "I think" answers were given, which leads me to believe that there's still some things that could be changed, could be not told to us, or vice versa, any of that way. But I think one thing that has struck a lot of our neighbors is the connection between Chesapeake and the New Development Road and discussion about a crash gate. Crash gate has been talked about, and really a lot of times it's been pushed aside, but there is a strong, I believe, belief among everybody in this room that says a crash gate would solve some of the problems in terms of the traffic. That would probably not make our friends on Maryland too happy, but when you see the cars come through, and I challenge any of you to drive down Warchester or North Hampton today on a road that has parked cars on both sides with one way up or down, you get challenged every day by people, just today where the cars, you have to go around somebody, you have to stop. I can only imagine what the increase of traffic is going to do to our, in our roads and our traffic on Warchester. So with that, again, I appreciate your time, your ability to listen to us, and we hope we come by way with a positive decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello. I'm Eileen Darmagalsky. I live on Chesapeake. We are opposed to special land use change and massive increase in density and traffic. We are open to compromise for the best interest of our neighborhood with decreasing the number and size of condos. We truly feel single-family homes are best suited and completely saleable at a fair profit. In granting the proposed request, Mr. Holwerda's history of non-completion, untruth for property speculation, manipulation of records to the courts, and history of bankruptcy should be taken into consideration. It is a true, it is a true reflection of his honesty, credibility, and character. When it has become the city's best interest to help the developer recoup his losses and ensure profitable development for the developer, poor decision-making should not be rewarded. We question the knowledge and authority of persons who are telling us what is best for us. Mayor Bliss has said previously that, quote-unquote, "The plans do not maintain the integrity of the neighborhood and are not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood." Commissioner Kelly has consistently been opposed to the proposed high levels of density submitted in developers' plans. When running for the city's commissioner's seat, Joe Jones was quoted in saying, quote-unquote, "Each neighborhood in the second ward has a very distinct character, and I want to make sure, as I'm considering policy, that it is not policy that erodes the uniqueness of the neighborhood," he said. "One size does not fit all, whether it's commercial development or housing development. I don't want to develop policy that will destroy the fabric of the ward." Former Commissioner Robeau also stated, quote-unquote, "There is a reason in the area was left low-density residential. That was no mistake." The city planning department mission statement states, "We carry out our responsibility under the direction of the city commissioners while respecting overall views and interests of the community and people who are impacted by specific projects or changes. We believe in working with the people to build consensus solutions that improve the quality of life in the community." We do not feel that this- We do not feel that this is in the community's best interest. For many of us, this is our greatest investment. The proposed changes are affecting our lives, investments, lifestyles, and quality of life. We are a well-established, middle-class, quiet neighborhood and a commitment to our home's ownership in the city we live in. We're asking you to hear us." Former Commissioner White put it perfectly. In all our efforts, I think he topped us all in stating it most fundamentally, "The burden of proof lies on the developer to show the benefits that this development will bring to the existing community. Neither he nor any of us feel that this has been demonstrated." Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard? Mr. Miller, you want to be heard on this public hearing? Okay.
I need that.
All right.
Talking about a full report. Well, I saw Miller back. This is a bird sanctuary. Does it have federal protection? Is something the neighbors can throw out, you know, as a kind of way down, as late as possible, but it's, it's a bird sanctuary, the pond I call Lake Chesapeake, the birds hang around. There are marvelous geese that come around there, at least as tall, testifying, I don't know what the name of them, maybe Canadian geese, but at least I've seen at least 36 at a time there. Deer, at least five to seven at a time. The deer look hungry, hungry. They come up to my window in that neighborhood, and that's the first time I experienced this in my life. So if you knock down trees, I mean, are you hurting their habitat as deer? Raccoons, did I mention that? Nobody knew where, they go up in the crooks, the tall trees, up to 40 feet high, right next to that lake, come down, inch their way down, takes them 15 minutes to get down a tree, going down just to get to water when the trees run out of water upstairs. They came and vote there. I brought up the city clerk in the past, you have to, I wore these, I voted stickers maybe eight, nine days, just to go over to the library across the street. Yankee Clipper, I mean, these people came in and vote, get over there to vote. The closest precinct, voting as Hartwell's Plymouth Manor, you had Crazy George, had his people, had a vote across the street. He was in the, his place was in the 46th precinct. They had a vote across the street to the library. Let's see, now, so Stone Brook viciously sabotaged that bird sanctuary once they got in. There was a construction cow path there, and you could make your way up a hill to get over to the Sunday Leonard bus, get to, they blocked it, they viciously blocked, a pile of, you know what, about eight feet high and maybe 12 feet wide. That should be investigated. There's been shabby treatment in the past. Stone Brook, nobody's come back to see what Stone Brook has done. One-third of Stone Brook residents can't even get over to vote at the Yankee Clipper Library. Put arms, 80 senior citizens, Cambridge, maybe one-third of those units. It's impassable. And so I fully endorse what our feisty year witnesses have said tonight and congratulate them on how well organized and documented you, they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi, good evening. I'm John Rothwell, Second Ward. I did not plan on speaking on this tonight, and I hope a couple commissioners do listen to what I have to say here because they'll know what I'm talking about. First, I'd like to quote Joni Mitchell, you know, "You're going to pave over Paradise but of a parking lot," sounds like. That's for us. Oh, folks, you young people won't remember that song. Second thing I'd like to add is affordable housing. I hear about AMI all the time. What kind of person are you going to have to live there? Now, the two joking things that I've said, let's get serious. I'd like to address this to our First Ward, our First Ward Commissioners. I heard ditch. I heard wetlands. I heard pond. Take a look at the West Side. Take a look at John Ball Park and the flooding. Let's go address the Third Ward Commissioner. Let's take a look at 269 Garfield. Property that the city owns went to the land bank and can't, can't sell because a house collapsed in it or sank in it in 1965 because of wetlands being filled in under drowned streams. Sounds like we've got a pristine piece of property here. Maybe the city ought to look at buying it, but I don't think it should be paved, or redeveloped. I just look at too many problems. Look, let's look at the drainage that's going to have an effect. You take Butterworth by John Ball Park, by the Coke plant there. From my research, I'm seeing a ton of basements flooding. They never flooded after the county redeveloped something on John Ball Park and got rid of the Duck Pond. There's going to be no drainage, you're going to have basements flooding, and the city's going to have a bigger issue with that, in my opinion, than they are with a development. Some things are just left to be untouched, and I think this property is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right. Oh, no clapping, please, no clapping. We don't allow that. We want to make sure that people who disagree feel comfortable voicing that opinion, so I'll just remind you of the rules. I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Robinson, and I live on Gabrielle in Grand Rapids. I think my neighbors have done an excellent job at presenting the many reasons why this land should not be redeveloped. However, he does have the right to do so. And from the Gabrielle point of view, the biggest concerns would be the water runoff. We do have a water runoff problem that this would probably, you know, exasperate. The second thing would be the wildlife. We have so many wildlife back in the, in that area. What happens to them? Where do they go? In our homes? Where do they go? But when we were at the planning meeting in December, I think they did a good job at listening to us, and they made a very good motion in which to pass this proposal. In it, they listed things that needed to be addressed if this land was to be developed, and I would appreciate it if you examined that motion and make sure that the plan that is presented, the final plan, because it seems that the plan changes month after month, year after year, but that the final plan meets what the Planning Commission has, has laid out with all of the exceptions and the make-shures and all of those before it is approved, because the plan changes so often that we want to be sure that the final plan is the final plan and that everyone in the neighborhood can benefit from this development and not just be a detriment and us lose our home values. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard? All right. Oh.
Hi. My name is Dan McGinn. I live on Wallwood, in, Wallwood in the Second Ward, right on the other side of Leonard, Leonard Street. I had not intended to talk either. I would just like to say that while the developer probably has the right to develop that property, I would prefer single families or duplexes myself. I think there's two excellent examples of condo associations. One is on Cranbrook, which is between Perkins and Warchester. There's another one, Lamberton Creek Lane, which is between Leonard and Nap, and it surrounds a pond. Really nicely done. Okay, I hate, I really would like to avoid the easy conversion of these multi-units in case the thing does not work out into apartments. I think that's something that would really be detrimental. And I would also like to be certain that Chesapeake is never connected to Plymouth, so that there's an easy access in that direction and that grouping of neighbors, which unfortunately has gunshots sounded frequently in the summer. It's a little too cold this time of year, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard? Okay, I am, Suzanne, do you want to come up and speak to any of the questions or concerns that you heard raised tonight, and then also see if Mr. Huarda wants to address any of the questions or concerns?
Just a couple. I think to Ms. Robinson's point, she was talking about the Planning Commission resolution. That is part of the ordinance that you would be adopting, is the conditions of approval that were laid out. So those components would travel with that with the city commission approval and would remain in place and tied to the project regardless of who owns it. So there, there is that piece. The question about the connection to Chesapeake and the idea of gating that with a crash gate, that has been explored. One of the concerns that we have, and it's always a challenge, as you know, in more of the modern neighborhoods or even some of the mid-century neighborhoods, is the lack of connectivity in a street grid. And in the opinion of the traffic engineers, when they were looking at this, they thought that the neighbors on Chesapeake actually would be the greatest beneficiaries of having that connection to Maryland because of the turning movements that they have to do on Leonard. And that the street does provide that connectivity between that, and so that's, that's a consideration that was brought up during the engineering evaluation. I'm looking to see if there was anything else specifically. I think that's probably the two big things that, that stood out to me as far as comments. A lot of comments on the water runoff and erosion controls, and Dan Taber did talk about in Planning Commission, the need for erosion control, and that is part of the LUDS permit, Land Use Development Services permit. So as part of that, soil erosion, sedimentation control plans are required, as well as the full environmental review that they do for Environmental Services. So all of those components, they would be reviewing, and they would be providing regular inspections when they go out. Dan did have the opinion, and, you know, when this comes back to you, we can have Dan present if you would like to hear from him, that it's possible this could actually help with some of the drainage, because it would be directing it straight to certain areas and away from the homes, that the site grading is difficult in this location. It does go, it's higher at Maryland and then it slopes down towards the pond. And so the neighbors do get water in their backyards. By diverting some of that water away from their backyards, the development project would possibly be assisting with some of the drainage in those areas. And then finally, I think the question about promoting single-family homes and single-family homes in the area. In the, in the past, the idea of developing for a single-family, when it was laid out, there was no consideration for the environmental features that were on the property, and the Plan Redevelopment District does encourage clustering, and that's really the big distinction, I think, between the previously approved plans and these plans, was the idea of clustering and getting away from those environmentally sensitive areas. The density calculations, as is currently written in the ordinance, does not exclude environmental features from those calculations. So while you may have a pond, the ordinance talks about the, the total acreage of the parcel of the lot, so we are looking at the lot when we're calculating our density. The ordinance does not say you need to exclude non-buildable areas or wetland areas or anything like that. It just talks about the lot. So by the ordinance language, we don't have anything that would exclude those areas from those density calculations.
Okay. Commissioner?
Could you speak to the concern about the width of the street and parking?
I would have, I'll have to go back and just check the measurements. I'm not that familiar with what that requirement. We have, you know, it's going to be a city street, so we have our dimensional requirements for what that is. They are going to be required to put sidewalk on both sides as part of the development, as well as street trees. So I, I don't know, Mr. Huarda may be able to respond to that, or his engineer is here as well. Off the top of my head, Commissioner, I can't answer that right away.
Okay, and one other thing about the type of condo, the two-story, are there other examples in the city that we can see?
We do. The, the one that I can think of is over by Blandford Nature Center. There was a condo development actually built by Steve Pierpoint, who was a former landscape architect of the city's. And that was developed around, I believe, the 80s, and it's basically a flat. So instead of thinking about condos being up and down, they're developed as flats. So you've got your lower level and your upper level, and, and there are examples. That's the one that comes to mind.
So I guess one other thing is, and we had talked about this with the Hall orders before, you recall the, the documentation around condo is that something that, I guess you'd have to answer that, you would be providing so that, because there's a concern from the residents about it becoming apartments at some point. So condo documentation? And then maybe if you know about the width of the street and parking, that would help too, Greg.
Okay, yes. Good evening. I think on the, we understand at least that the condo documents are something that we must prepare in advance of any next approval from the planners or, or anywhere else. So I think we submit a draft, and that has to be, that has to be approved, and I think what we're, what we're anticipating is some type of, some type of restrictive language that, that basically sets, sets the neighborhood up for success and not, and not a revolving door situation.
Okay, and then, let's see, you started out 44 single homes, now it's 134 units. What was it? Remind us what it was in between, because this is the third iteration, because then it was apartments.
Okay, the first, the first time around where the, where we received an approval for 40, 40-some single-family homes, that was prior to the acquisition of the 843 Maryland Northeast parcel, and that's a pretty, that's a pretty big parcel. I think it's about five, five acres. And then also, at that time, the 44 or 40-something single-family home development was going to connect to Bradford, and that was a, that just wasn't popular. And we, we never built it. The recession came, so the whole thing sat for a while, and then we went, we went back to RJM Design. Jim Morgan helped us with coming up with a new plan, and this was subsequent to our 843 Maryland acquisition, and the, the Planning Commission approved whatever Jim had on paper, and it was basically a combination of single-family homes, condominiums, and apartments for, for around 160 units. We came to the city commission and it was not approved, so we, we gave it a rest. And, and then really in response to concerns from our, our area neighbors, also a better, a better marketplace, we, we came back and we removed the apartments, and these were really, these were buildings with 16 units, I think, and there, there was a couple on one plan that had 24 units. And the plan was actually to make those condos, but I think they, they looked enough like apartments where that was causing some, some, some difficulty. So we took those away. And then in addition, I think most recently, we improved or increased the Maryland setback in the, in the setback from any building of ours from the, from the west property line of 879 Maryland. And then with some, with some regrading and just refiguring on the grading, we were able to disturb less of the natural features that, that separate or would separate us from the Gabriel Hills subdivision.
And then finally, Greg, I've, I've heard concerns expressed that the plan has changed. Can you talk a little bit about that and why that is, why it was changed, when it was changed, and will it change in the future, and will you communicate with the neighbors?
I think the answer is we will communicate with the neighbors. We've tried really hard to, to do that here continuously. We've had several meetings with, with neighbors, with association leadership, and I think the, you know, right now, what we're, what we're attempting to do is get your feedback on this concept at large. I think the, I think what, you know, an example of a change that could happen, I think, is we, we may find another, another four-family or two-family plan that we think might be a good one for this particular community and would propose to, you know, interject or insert that. I think that, that kind of, you know, that's an example, I think, of a possible change.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I just might want to add too, for those in the room who are always concerned about the affordable housing piece, that this is not a project that would receive any tax abatements.
Correct. This is a, this is no tax abatements, no incentives.
Yeah. Thank you. I, does anybody else?
Anyone else have questions? Commissioner?
Yeah, I was wondering about the, my colleague asked about the, the width of the street that's being planned. Can you expound on that?
I, I can. The, I believe the, the stand- I can. The, I believe the standard in the city is 30 feet wide or 30-foot wide paved street. And we went to design team a couple of times because we were faced with a number of challenges here, trying to get all the pieces and parts to work and fly together, you know, harmoniously. And I think the way it panned out is the road went from 30 feet in width to 29 feet in width. At least that's my recollection. And I don't know, I don't remember why, but that's what ended up happening. And we had, we had the engineer, I can't remember his name right now, but Rick Goddard-Reese in the room with design team. And he looked at that pretty hard. And he was calling that good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions? All right.
The one thing I forgot to mention is that the Planning Commission, one of the conditions is that for detailed architectural drawings and the final design of the building, so you will go back to the Planning Commission for review on that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any final comments before I close this public hearing? All right. So this public hearing is closed, and this will be referred back to our Committee of the Whole. So thank you all for coming out. Good to see you. All right. So next that will take us to our public comment period. So this is an opportunity for you to come and speak about anything that is on your heart or your mind tonight. This, same rules apply during this period. And that is, we ask that you share your name, the city you live, and you're given three minutes to speak. Drive safe, everyone.
Hello, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Verwies. I'm a resident in Garfield Park. And I wanted to speak tonight to a few things. One, related to the city manager's search that you're a part of, and also the conversation around the Housing Now policies that are in front of you soon. I just want to voice my concern about, really for my fellow citizens, I think we, what I've observed lately is a pattern of automatic distrust in you all and in the city staff, that I think is concerning. Because I think a pattern of distrust or an automatic sort of reflexive response of distrust that might be rooted in some authentic pain of the past, might be leading us to inaction and the inability to move forward with some positive changes. And so I want to appeal to my fellow citizens that we would be careful when we make public comments not to just quickly speak from a place of distrust, that we would really authentically listen to the proposals that are before the commission, that we would trust our elected officials to some extent. I mean, we were called to trust but verify. I think a position of automatic distrust, though, will lead to one intimidated city officials who will be unable to make important decisions because of fear of political retribution. And also just a perpetuation of the status quo. Change is difficult. Almost any change that you propose, there will be someone who will say, I don't want it to happen. And you as city officials are called to make some pretty hard decisions sometimes. I hear the desire to reach consensus, and I appreciate that very much. But I also know that consensus is not always possible. There are times where you have to make difficult decisions that might be contrary to what a vocal minority might speak to. So I just want to, one, thank you for your courageous leadership in the city, both for the city officials but city staff who, day in and day out, you don't do your jobs, I know, for the sake of building a name for yourself. You're here as servants. And servant leadership is difficult, so I appreciate your willingness to sit in that seat, to sometimes take abuse. But to my fellow citizens, I would say, let's not be abusive in the use of our power. We live in a democratic system that gives us power, the power of our voice. Let's not use that abusively. Let's not overuse that without using our ears too, of listening to really what's going on, listening to the proposals that are before the commission, and not automatically speaking in opposition. So as you have, in the weeks that had some difficult conversations, I'm sure many of you are hearing from the public, particularly around the housing proposals, please listen but also be courageous in your decisions as you move forward, keeping in mind the greater good of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shocked. Russ Homestead, West Side. We're on Facebook Live tonight, and I just wanted to come up and thank you all.
I was hoping you would notice that.
But also, on the, I wanted to ask a question regarding the city manager vote that happened earlier, because I was a bit in shock and I didn't know exactly what was being voted on. So is it voted that it will be within the next 30 days that you will be deciding how to proceed? That's what it was?
Yes.
Awesome. And hopefully this Facebook Live will also lead to live streaming of the other meetings that happened during the day that some of us can't make it to. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Russ. Appreciate you. All right. Others who wish to be heard? All right. Scene none. I am going to turn to my colleagues. I think I'll start, Ashley Kurt, I want to save you for last.
That's what.
I think I'll start down here with Commissioner Jones. Oh, Mr. Miller, are you coming back up to speak?
Obviously, right. Okay. Walks off Miller back. What I didn't get to in the first presentation on items up for vote tonight, on three-mile wide bike lanes. It'll just slow down your Route 13 out there. We, I see plans for up to 100 miles of bike lanes and we're down now below two miles of bus lanes. You know, this is just upside down. You get a little snow here. Bike lanes are, if anyone's noticed, bike lanes are utterly impractical, unusable, five months a year. You know, what about the other side? Grand Rapids is the hilliest mid-sized city in the nation and the snowiest mid-sized city in the nation. As Commissioner Lanier has already testified in Chicago, you know, you just have a couple of miles of bus lane to deal with in Chicago. On, let's see, D3, Whitewater is back. $40 million for Whitewater. You don't have any dough for snowplows. I mean sidewalk snowplows. And my complex, the bucks from John Deere sidewalk snowplows doing an awesome job. You know, you've got the bucks for this. Again, it's just upside down. And 40 million there for Whitewater project, because you liberals had some kind of problem with perfectly good blue waters. What's wrong with blue waters, anyway? And again, it's just your sick priorities. I'm curious on about that, but it won't do anything practical. Suppose it was to increase the accessibility of downtown. Sorry, but my neighbors and I don't kayak ourselves. Your model seems to be go kayak yourselves. Your buses are never going to get back. Black routes and Catholic routes, which were here, which came downtown forever until 2014, June 14, to be specific. I saw documentation of some of these things. We have two communication directors earning 200 grand a year. It's always sketchy, you know, plus out-of-site benefits. This is a comic book, what we see. There are generally no details or details we need on the form of informed opinion. And once again, bus routes from Catholic and black neighborhoods on two of these items I mentioned earlier. Items C2 and 3, you can't even get down here. Routes 2 and 3 on Burton, Old St. Joe's, and 2, 3, 10, and 16 on the next version. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right. One final call, and then I'm closing this public comment period. All right, it is closed. Now I will turn to my colleagues. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to all who were here on this evening, those who also viewed the live stream. And I want to provide a very heartfelt thank you to Madam City Clerk O'Neill, who I've known for the 21 years that I've been here. I can remember when Darlene was on sidewalk patrol. I can remember when Darlene was in special events. So to your credit, you actually, what you represent is probably the ideal public servant in terms of your ability to matriculate throughout an organization based on, you know, working in different parts of the organization and knowing the city of the organization like the back of your hand. So you have always served with significant class. And I could always find peace on election night because I knew that you were at the helm. So thank you for your leadership. To say that you will be missed is an understatement. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Yeah, I too want to say thank you to Darlene for her time of service. I know we just spent a couple of years together, but it was great to be able to serve with you. And, you know, I said similar things about Greg when he left, that not only did you do the organization well, but I know that you left it in a great place for us moving forward. And so I'm confident in you having put good people behind you to help us continue on our process. And so I thank you for that.
Madam City Clerk, like Commissioner Jones, I've known you for a very long time. Excuse me. And as I was sworn in recently, I talked about the amazing administrators that we have, the appointed officials. And I mean that wholeheartedly, that the service that you've given to this community over the year, over the decades, you've left a mark and a really nice one. Your customer service, I say this all the time, is impeccable. And I look forward to seeing how you're going to use these amazing skills as you're traveling and resting and cooking and all that. And we'll be over to eat over your next chapter. So please keep us in the loop. This is home. You're always welcome. Thank you for your service. Commissioner?
Yes. Darlene, again, I just really thank you. I think that you do have a career in storytelling and speech writing, because I still remember your speech when you were first sworn in and talking about your upbringing, your parents, and the integrity that you brought to this job is reflected in that upbringing and those stories that you told us. And in how you conducted yourself with, in terms of putting elections and the people first to make sure that they could vote and that they had access and that the elections ran smoothly. You worked with the citizens group and they were delighted with the outcomes. And I think that you always put your staff first. You had to make some really tough decisions sometimes around hiring and choices. And then sometimes people would leave and you'd have to start all over. So you've just been an exemplary employee. And I do hope, I know, one of the things you expressed not too long ago was your excitement around the work and equity. So I hope you'll have an opportunity to use those talents that we all know you have in that arena as well. We will miss you, and hopefully you won't disappear. And that maybe either Mercedes or Alanda?
Anandi.
Anandi will come and work here and be a clerk someday. You know, after all, you can train them and raise them. Yes, they hate the jeans. So thank you. And thank you to those of you who are left in the audience for coming tonight and speaking and listening.
I would just like to point out to the community that Madam Clerk here, 32-plus years, but she started working here when she was 10. So I just want to put that out there. I'm a lover of words, so I was trying to think of a word. And sometimes words come to mind. And I read the description of the word. It's the perfect word. And so what I'd like to say to you is bon voyage, which is an expression to express good wishes to somebody about to go on a journey. So bon voyage.
I too want to thank you for the short time we had. My election was so smooth and your whole department was amazing to me. So thank you. I'm excited that you're going to get to go travel, have fun in New Orleans. I do want to just take a moment to, you know, I lament the fact that we didn't come to a conclusion today for this process. But I do hope that, as Ryan mentioned, that it will help us to rebuild some trust as we reboot. So I just want to say thanks for, to the community for turning out in a major way. The stakeholders who gave two mornings of their time to the process. And we're committed to doing it differently and moving it further up and further in. And so please share your ideas about how we can do engagement better. We want, we need to get the word out for recruitment in a different way this time. So if there's ways that you can help with that too, we welcome that. And lastly, I do want to just thank these three candidates. They spent a week with us. They stood in front of the community and asked a really tough set of questions. And they all earned my respect in that process.
Thank you, Kurt. I could not agree more. And I'm going to say just a couple more words, because I do, I think all of us, we wish you the best as you begin this new chapter. And there are so many memories I have of you over the last 13 years that we've served together. And when people ask me about you, I always say that you are probably the most authentic public servant I have ever met. But you're way more than that. You are a problem solver and a fixer. And some of us around this table have watched you take some very difficult issues and figure them out and lead the community to help you in creating a better service. I'm sure there's lots of things you won't miss, including probably all of us blowing up your phone on election night, saying, when are the results going to come in? I think we've all been in that seat. You probably won't miss the long nights, the, I'm sure headaches that you have had to deal with because of the strain that comes with having seven bosses. But I can tell you that regardless of all of those ups and downs that I know you have, you have really blazed through with grace and wisdom and professionalism, you will be really missed. And I really wish you well as you begin this next chapter. City Manager, any final thoughts?
Sure. I get a real treat. I get to talk to Darlene at her retirement party. And I'm really looking forward to that, to celebrating her service there with the staff that she served in so many ways. So you've been a great partner for us. And it's really nice that we've been able to celebrate you here tonight. And we'll probably get another chance later. So looking forward to that too. Thank you.
City Attorney?
You better say something.
I'm glad to. And I'll just say deado to everything that everyone has said. And add to it that I hope, my prayer, my wish, that you step into your new season and enjoy every day of it. And so I'll miss you as well. And you were a blessing to me when I started, and I appreciate it tremendously.
All right. With that...
Is the retirement party open to the public for one hour?
It is. It is. Yes.
Want to share the times?
Yes. Having a retirement party, coffee gathering tomorrow here in the chambers from 2:00 to 4:00. Probably shouldn't, I mean, all this love that I'm getting, it should be from 1:00 to 5:00. But yes, it is open to the public. And the public is welcome. I would love to see everyone's face. I've had a fantastic career. I really have. Yeah, there's been long days, long nights, a lot of sacrifice. But you know what? It was very rewarding. So thank you again, Grand Rapids.
Thank you. And we are adjourned.